I've come to order. Case of twenty-four fourteen. It's All For His Glory LLC. This is a request for conditional use for plan development for two uses on the subject property. The owner of the property is All For His Glory LLC. And the property is located on Lake Street in Roselle, Lumleydale Township. It's about one and three-eighths acres serviced by well and septic. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four. I have objections from the building department that I presume have been made available to the petitioner. And P. And then no other comments or remarks or objections from any authority with the exception of Village of Hanover Park, who has filed an informational letter. I also have two exhibits which I will comment later. One is a two thousand and five survey and the other is a hand-drawn site plan. So exhibit one and exhibit two will be part of the record. And then I'll ask the petitioner to identify himself. Who is the petitioner?
All For His Glory is the petitioner. Mr. Heidner is a member of the LLC. Michael Hobbie, H-O-V-D-E, on behalf of the petitioner.
Okay, thank you. Would you raise your hands and be sworn in, please?
You do solemnly swear affirm that testimony about to give at this cause now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
Okay, first of all, just a brief comment. If it's likely that this is going to go forward, we're going to need an updated survey and a site plan that's not hand-drawn. I know hand-drawn plans are generally accepted by the building department, but that's because they go out and make inspections. But I think we are likely to need new drawings. With that, go right ahead and proceed.
So first thing, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that the petitioner or myself received a copy of the building department's objections.
Yeah.
I don't believe that we received a copy of the objections from the building.
You want to come up here?
Sure.
I mean, you can stay back there if you like, but well, it's briefly, it said, what I have in our file says, this use currently exists, appears to be gravelled and the parking and parking to the lot lines also may be potential, may be potentially parking on the septic field. So that's one reason we'll have to have new surveys to delineate the parking and whatever else. This is the letter.
So should we present some information now and then we'll have to come back with the survey or should we?
No, you can just update. If there's no substantial changes, we don't need a new public hearing. We'll just have an updated survey. So you withdraw this and substitute with the updated survey, same with the site plan.
So the reason we're here today is that this property had previously received a violation for two uses on one property, which is section thirty-seven dash eight hundred dot eight, which is not allowed to have more than one use on a zoning lot. So it's our understanding that parking or storing equipment or material in the rear portion of the lot, if it's properly screened, would be allowed if there was only one tenant in the building. But a second tenant is not allowed to do that because now you have two uses in one lot.
Okay, tell us what the use, so the second use is parking?
Is a contractor to, oh, let the petitioner participate. Yeah.
What's the principal use?
I have a use. The building was originally, when I bought it, was built by a man named Mariantini, who was a general contractor. And when he built the building, he had an office inside the building, which allowed, at the time when the building was built, for one use for that rear lot. That was him. Now, I bought the building, he loved. I have one use. So I've been written up a couple of times through the years, because I probably owned the building for years now, for having more than one person in the back. So how to rectify that is to get.
Yeah, I know. Let me ask you this. What is the principal use? What do you, what do you use the building for in front?
In the front is an office.
And you have tenants or is it an office for your business?
It's a multi.
You office there?
No, I don't.
Multi, multi-tenant.
But it's a multi-tenant building.
Okay, so you own a pro, you own the property and you rent out office space in the building.
Exactly.
And then you rent parking spaces in the back?
Parking spaces. First thing is, there's not one car parked on the septic.
Okay, wait, let's.
Yeah, but that's part of your thing is that there's a thing about parking. It has nothing to do with parking. It has to do with storage.
Storage of what?
Materials. So in this particular case, the tenant that I have is a brick, is a a bricklayer or whatever type thing, okay? The shard mason. He's been there for about fifteen years. He stores in that back area those things you put up to stand on, to put bricks on, you know? He extra stone, a tractor. But none of it's on the septic. And so with that being said, I'm trying to make it where I could have two people use the back lot legally instead of one person using the back lot legally.
Does the contractor rent office space in the building?
That's part of the deal.
How many other tenants?
Right now, I only have him and another tenant, and that's it. But nobody parks back there because there's a chain-linked fence. That one from when I bought the building.
I get it.
But I'm just letting you know. This has nothing to do with parking. This has to do with storage.
Okay. So what else do you have to tell us?
That's all. I just want to change it from one to two so I don't get trouble.
Well, you got to make the case for a conditional use, though.
So the, I think that if you go through the, he's not asking for a variation in any permitted uses in the district. Just the only variation here, the only conditional use is to have two uses. But they're all.
Instead of one.
But they all would still be within the permitted uses.
Yeah, this is interesting to me. If this were here on an appeal instead of a petition, I think there might, well, never, I withdraw that. So the, the uses, to the extent that you have a contractor that rents space in the front and has storage in the back, those seem to be integrated uses to me.
So, but watch this. Only one is, so let's pretend I had three tenants that were all in the construction business. I am, the way that this was done or written, I am only allowed to let one tenant put stuff back there. And what I'm trying to do is to get two tenants to put stuff back there. So let's talk about why. Because I can get more money for the exact same space when I give somebody a place to store materials.
Yeah, well, that's, that's an economic consideration.
No, well, that's the purpose why I'm here.
You should let Mr. Hobbie do the argument.
So that. Well, I wasn't arguing, I was just explaining to you.
I know you weren't arguing like we're sitting around a coffee table, but that you're advancing an argument.
So, okay.
Our, our understanding is that the tenant would be allowed, a contracting tenant would be allowed to store materials back there as a single tenant. But once there's a second tenant there, they can't do that. So he's asking for that conditional use. But no change in any of the, it's not an unpermitted use, it's a permitted use. The only thing that's wrong is that there's two people doing it rather than one. So there wouldn't be any change in impairing adequate light and air because it is a permitted use. Wouldn't increase hazard from fire or other dangers. It's not in the building, it's exterior. Wouldn't diminish the value of lands and buildings. There was a comment that it would increase value. Unduly increasing traffic congestion, the tenant is already there. And again, it's a permitted use, it's just a question of whether they can store items. Not increasing potential for blood damages in storage, not, not a construction or a altering the ground. Incurring additional public expense for fire protection, rescue, relief. It's nothing that's interior or otherwise impair public health, safety, comfort, or also general welfare for creating a nuisance. Again, it's a permitted use, it's just a question that two people would be able to do it rather than, than one.
So one of the, one of your office tenants is a general, is a contractor, you said, and presumably a, a construction contractor of some kind?
Yes.
What's the other tenant?
No, no, one, I'm trying to get it to two.
Well, who will be the, so you now have only one?
One. Two, so.
You have a proposed tenant?
No, but I can't, so if I went to go rent the building.
I get it. The, the question was, who's the other tenant of the building? That's the other contractor.
Yeah, right.
I'm just saying to you that I'm trying to get it.
I understand what you're trying to get.
Okay.
Here's what I'm trying to get. I need to get some kind of a picture of how many people occupy space, how many cars?
Right now, I only have two.
Two what, tenants?
Two tenants. I only have two tenants.
What do they do? One's a bricklayer or.
One's a bricklayer and one's the adult fun place.
The what?
Adult fun. It's a photography studio.
F U N or F U N D?
F U. I don't know the legal name.
It's a photography studio?
It's a, it's what's called a photography studio.
Well, what does that mean? What do you mean, what's called a photography studio?
It's called a photography studio. I don't know how to explain it better than that.
What do they do?
They take pictures of people that go in there for pictures.
Okay, so if I wanted to have my kids' graduation pictures, that's the place I would go?
Yes, you could go there and they would take your picture.
Okay.
They're killing me.
Well, I'm trying to flesh out the facts.
How long, sir, have you been living in DuPage County?
Well, that is, it's a good thing I'm not a lady because effectively you're asking my age.
No, I've lived here for thirty-three years.
Well, I've lived here for longer than that.
See, there you go.
Longer than that. How many employees occupy the office space?
Oh, I have no clue. Three?
How many cars are there during the course of a day?
I can't tell you, sir. I'm a real coward and I've owned the building forty years.
At any one time or?
Or, I'm trying to get an idea about the daily in-and-out traffic and what, what the circumst, and how the office relates to the storage in the back. And I'm going to ask you about the back. When do you, when are deliveries made from the back? When are deliveries made to the back area?
That would be during business hours during the day.
And how much, how often?
Not even once a week.
For the bricklayer guy?
Both of them.
Both of them?
It's not like it's a thing where people are in and out every day.
Wait, maybe I don't understand. The storage area in the back, you said, is storage materials for a brick contractor and what is stored is related to the brick business, bricklayers' business or brick contractors' business. Is there also currently storage in the back?
No.
For the site, for the photography guy?
No, I'm only allowed one.
Well, then why did you get a red tag?
I didn't get a red tag. I didn't get a red tag, there's no red tag on that property.
Okay.
I, I think to clarify, there was previously a citation for having more than one use on the property.
Which I've gotten three times over thirty years.
Our understanding is that the more than one use is allowing outdoor storage for a office tenant when there's another tenant in the building.
Yeah, right.
It's a single tenant, our understanding is they're allowed to have storage. Once there's another tenant in the building, there's no outdoor storage allowed.
Okay. And whose interpretation of the ordinance is that? State's Attorney's Office?
Well, that was the, there was a citation made from the county and I believe the State's Attorney's Office conferred with that because there was, you know, a fine made in October, I believe.
Last year, but it was relatively.
In the last, in the last year, yes, the last twelve months.
Okay. What about the other members of the board? Any questions? Very.
No.
Anybody has questions? Let me find out, I'll come back to you in a minute, but let me ask for comments from the members of the audience. And here's, if anybody wants to make a comment or ask a question, you have to be sworn in, state your name and address, spell your name for the record, and then tell us your comment in just a few minutes. Now, so with that, does anyone have any comments that they want to make? One person? Two people, three people? Okay, would you all raise your hands and be sworn in, please?
You do solemnly swear affirm that testimony about to give at this cause now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
Four. Four? Who's the four?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Well, who'd like to go first?
I'll go first. I am, I'm Trudy Kirsch. I'm part of owner of six N two-six-nine Wheaton Road.
Can she stand up? Because I can't hear her.
Spell your.
I can talk louder, I was a teacher.
Spell your last name, please. And where do you, where is your property? You live at this property that you just described?
No, my, my son and his family live there. Our name is also, I live, my residence is two seventy-five Thrasher Street.
And where is, where, you have a property that is close to this parcel?
We back up to.
You back up to?
Yeah, six N two-six-nine Wheaton Road.
Okay, and then what are your comments?
Well, I, I'm surprised to hear that it's a photography studio because I did look up twenty-four west seven thirteen Lake Street and when I looked on Google and when their description said they were a livestock producer. So I, I didn't know that they were a photography stu, studio.
Why, you don't, you're not suggesting there's livestock being produced at this property?
I don't know, that's what Google said, what said was livestock.
Oh, wait, we all have to bow down to Google? Whatever Google says is.
I know, that's, I thought I would mention that. It is called Picture Perfect of Rose. That's what the building is called according to Google when I went to twenty-four west seven thirteen. So my, my only comment is this, little questionable about the activity that goes on at twenty-four west seven thirteen. Didn't realize there was an owner and then two other tenants, so I'm glad to know that. And I'm glad we're having this because our property does back up. We can see the, the back of the building and I'm curious to see what's going to happen with this because we're not always pleased with what we think is going on there.
Okay, you have any objections to this petition or support for this?
So the, the petition I believe is just asking for storage for a brick contractor and I have no objection to that as far as I am concerned. I think it would be fantastic if the entire parking lot was taken up with contractor materials.
Okay, thanks. Now, these two people, next, please. Name and address.
Oh, Nicole and Lori Antone. We live at six two, six N two-five-seven Wheaton. We share a property line with, with this property.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Tom, T as in Tom, O-T-H.
Thank you.
My question is, what, what is the second tenant, the non-bricklayer, going to be storing back there?
So, I'm sorry.
What is your, what is going to be stored back there?
Yeah, and it, so right now, there's, there, well, there have been a lot of things back there in the past. There have been piles of logs, there have been cars parked. Both of those things were over the property line for a while. And then I had some communications with Mr. Heidner and they eventually moved the stuff off the property line. So that was fixed. But I'm just wondering, since we've got the adult fun place, which I think is a massage parlor, and then the other tenant is a bricklayer, if we open this up to two uses for the back lot only, if I understand it correctly, what, what is the massage parlor going to put back there?
It wouldn't be the massage parlor putting anything back there. So as an example, let's say there was a roofer that wanted to rent an office out of the building. And.
Mr. Chairman, can you, sorry, I cannot hear. Can you take your hands away from your mouth so I can hear you things?
I apologize. Let's say a roofer wanted to rent an office in the building. The roofer would be allowed to store roofing materials back there as an example. So instead of one use, I would be allowed two uses.
Okay, let me stop you for a second. We don't do sort of prospective pro forma zoning conditional uses. If you have two tenants and you propose two tenants, we will consider that. But we're not going to consider two uses for some second hypothetical possible future use.
There are permitted uses on the property. As long, and let's say that list is ten different people. Okay?
That's not the way, okay, that's fine. I, I understand your argument, but that's.
Mr. Chair, I guess, I guess to clarify that there was a violation by the county saying that this is considered a second use because there's two tenants in the building. So he is seeking permission for the bricklayer to make, to stay as a tenant and to store equipment outside. The county's position has been consistently that we need zoning relief in order to store materials for the existing tenant.
Okay. But this is a conditional use for a planned develop. So we need some precision about what that is going to be. Not, oh, I'd like to have two tenants and whoever they are will be determined in the future. You, did you have a brief follow-up comment? Because I don't usually go back to.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was a question. What are the permitted uses for the property?
Well, I can't get into that because it's outlined, it's a list that's outlined in the ordinance. So you can, you don't have a look at that? No, 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 in the, in the zoning ordinance. So did you want to be next, sir?
I mean, I'm in concert with my wife and our neighbor here, so as she mentioned, we share a property line with this gentleman and we've kind of seen what has been stored there in the past. We had to deal with it before and yes, he, after some time, he's cleaned it up. He's moved everything off of our property. Whatever was stored there before spilled onto our property and we're just concerned that might happen again.
Okay. So before I go to the last lady.
This gentleman down here?
Pardon me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before I go on to the next speaker, commenter from the audience, I'm a little intrigued that there was a reference made, the fact that there is a massage parlor there and you concurred with that? Is that?
I did still agree with it. All I can tell you.
Well, I'll read the transcript to just decide whether I'm right or wrong. But it seemed to me that you said with respect to the massage parlor, the inference being you concurred that there's a massage parlor. An adult fun probably sounds like a name that's more consistent with a massage parlor than the photo studio that you suggested I take my kids to for my graduation pictures.
I didn't do that either, sir.
Okay, I'll read the transcript.
Read it. All I can tell you is one thing. Anything that's on that property is a permitted use within the zoning for DuPage County.
Okay. And I'll just say again, that's not the way we deal with conditional uses for planned developments. We talk about time limits, number of cars, where employees park, where the garbage, garbage disposals are. So there is great precision when we grant a conditional use, not anything that's permitted. So who's the, I didn't see if the person in the back.
No.
Okay, then you're the last commenter?
Okay, I have nothing to do with zoning. I'm just here to express my feelings about DuPage County living here.
I'm not interested in your feelings.
Well, I have serious things.
Okay.
Serious, serious flooding taking place where you cannot use this.
I'm only going to take testimony that's related to the zoning petition that's been for us.
Well, could you see this some other time? I just want people to see and know.
I'm not in charge of that.
This lady here knows.
Okay.
From water management.
Let me tell you, I want to know your name and address and spell your name so that I know I'm not permitting to speak about extraneous issues.
Okay, is there anybody in a civil engineer manner that could help me out of this, outside of this room?
I have no idea, I'm not, I'm not sufficiently knowledgeable to give you guidance. But it seems to me that you've got pictures of flooding, that sounds like a stormwater department issue.
But I've been to, many, many, I've been coming here for ten years. This lady called me from Spain one time.
That was nice of her.
You should have come with her outside.
Can we have your name and address?
Sure, my name is Karen Rug, R-U-G-G. And I've been here, my grandfather brought two acres seventy-seven years ago and I'm not allowed to walk down clean streets.
You know the address?
My address or this address?
Your address.
My address is one-two-two West George Street.
Okay.
In Itasca, Illinois.
Thanks.
And if anybody could help me, these are nurses' cars.
I'm sympathetic, but.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I saw you anyways.
Don't see Mayor Prine in Itasca.
No, but I have him right here.
Oh, Jesus.
Right here is Mayor Prine, excuse me, are you Ketter from Itasca?
No.
There was a Ketter in Itasca, here's Mayor Prine in the picture.
That was my mother, you didn't have party, no.
Thank you.
You can comment after, we have public comment. You get new record and make public comment. We do not have public comment tonight. We have public comment about this case right now and that is over. So listen back to Mr. Hobbie. How do you want to result, how do you want to go forward?
Well, we need to, I, I think you suggested we need an updated survey because the existing one is too old and a, and a redrawing of the site plan. So if we're submitting a redrawn site plan, that would have the specifics you spoke about, about what exactly the conditional use is looking for. I think it's pretty clear, they're looking for a conditional use for what's already being done on the current tenant. So we'll be coming back with that.
You want to have another public hearing?
Do you have a public hearing?
That's up to you. It's not, we don't have a particularly clear record. Or maybe we do, I'm just missing it. Does anybody have any view on this?
No, no, I'm just saying.
Do you feel that we have a sufficiently clear record to give fair consideration to this case? Or are we?
We need more detail if he wants to prove it to you.
Okay.
Then we'll have another hearing.
Yeah. So do we have a date for a follow-up hearing?
We have all Thursdays in May available. The next available one is May ninth.
May ninth, okay?
Sure. Oh, wait, we may not be able to get, we may not be able to get.
Let's push it, let's push it to near the end. So let's push it, let's push it to near the end.
Or shoot.
You want June second?
Only because.
June thirteen?
June thirteen.
Perfect.
Okay, we'll set the matter for June thirteen, five, uh, six o'clock in this room and we'll uh close for this evening. Thank you very much, everyone.